All right, we're going to get started. This is the regular meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. Today is April 10th, 2025. I am going to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Reese from our meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Adumas?
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to start with a silent prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Please join in silent prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and desperate for all.
Let's do introductions from the dais.
Prissy Rushell, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Somer Adumas, Commissioner.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
And I'm Commissioner Denise Drehouse. Thank you. I'm going to make a motion to approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Adumas?
Yes.
All right. I'm hesitating because I'm waiting for that third. It's like, yeah, I apologize. We do have one speaker's card for the public comment section of our meeting. Stefan Pryor is here. Sorry, Stefan. Please come forward. You've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes. Welcome.
How y'all doing? My name's Stefan Pryor. A name to know and a name you can trust. Y'all like that, don't y'all? All right, okay. I'm down here to speak about MSD, not the ODOT, but I know who ODOT is behind me, Ms. D. I'll see you back there in a second row. But down in the Riverside Drive, down in the East End, I went down and paid a visit to the fluids. And some residents' apartments, houses, got flooded in the basement. And you had some MSD workers came out with a customer guide. And they said if this backup is caused by any sewer backup, we can actually come out and help clean it up for free. All of a sudden, the residents said they never got a call back. They said they're not responsible for the cleanup, not the river flood. We talking about the sewer that's in their house. And no call back, none of that. Then they saying they went to court and they did a class action lawsuit against MSD. And MSD is no longer going to help them out anymore and all this. It was a lie. I remember that case was in 2017, Cook versus the City of Cincinnati MSD. I remember that. Like it's yesterday. Christine, I remember that. They tried to trick people, you know, doing all this non-stuff what they doing. So I got to help the residents down in Riverside Drive in the East End. It's real bad down there. And I went down there and take a visit. Y'all should go down and take a visit too and see how it look for y'allself, you know, instead of believing what people saying. It's always good to go out and examine the problem before you do any solution. Got that right, Jeff? All right, Jeff. All right, y'all. I've got too much to say, but I love y'all guys and nothing y'all can do about it. All right? All right.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
I've got 10 seconds left.
Oh, sorry.
If it's your birthday, happy birthday, online, on TV. If it's your birthday, I love y'all.
Thank you. All right. And I do expect we'll get, if you want to stick around, I expect we'll get an update from MSD. There is an item on the agenda. It's not related to flooding, but we'll have them come up when they come up for that item and ask them for an update. So you might want to stick around. All right. Let's go to comments and motions of commissioners. Commissioner Somer Adumas.
Thank you so much. And I have been down to see the flooding. And when I went down at the Black Walk of Fame, I noticed that James Brown was getting down. The, you know, the electricity was going. I think initially, initially, they had cut everything off, I think, according to Phil, and realized they didn't need to cut that off. So it was built high enough that it didn't affect electricity. But it is, as you say, lots of water down there and the engineer corps and MSD and everybody's working on it. I think there were 147 complaints, concerns, that came into MSD. Only 14 of them, I believe, qualify for MSD to do something with it, but I'm sure they're still evaluating. I'm going to move on. I went to the Richard T. Farmer Boys and Girls Club's grand opening, and I'm sure you'll say more about it, the ribbon cutting on Friday. And then also attended Colrain Township Station 102 ribbon cutting and open house, the brand new open house, brand new facility, I should say. They've been waiting for it for quite a while. I also went to wear blue child abuse prevention photo because this will be their, technically their last time in their old building. So it was lots of people there, and I try to do that every year. Also attended yesterday the Urban League of Greater Southwestern Ohio glorifying the lion ceremony where they recognized some phenomenal people. It was a great time, great luncheon. And then this morning, I attended the OKI Board of Directors meeting. Lots of changes, lots of looking at grants and opportunities and where funding may come from. They looked at their new proposal for their project for '26 through '29, was it, Eric? Okay. Yeah, okay. And so they have some great plans for the whole county, Hamilton County. And also, I met with the administrator and some of our legal counsel yesterday for just a brief meeting. And then this morning, I met with the prosecutor, Connie Pillage, for a short meeting. And that'll end my report.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I've got quite a few things on my list I might consolidate, but the first one is related to the flooding. I was, to have been down on the riverfront, trying to gauge the flooding and look at some of what is happening down there and any damage that's occurred. And so just for the public's knowledge, there has been flooding in the bottom portion of the parking facilities down on the banks. They were built to flood. We have lifted all the development out of the floodplain by way of those parking garages. So they were meant to do what they're doing right now, which is flood. But the water has started to recede, so that's the good news. The parking has always been available on the top level. It's that bottom level that's got too much water for people to go in and park there. But it's starting to recede. They were down there yesterday afternoon, I think it was there around 4:00, spraying down the parking garage to make sure that they're starting at the high point and then moving their way down. They're removing mud and debris and wood and fish, from what I understand. I understand if you leave fish too long, it gets a little stinky. That's what I'm told. So anyway, you got to get to it quickly. And there's a Reds game tomorrow. And so they're trying to get that completed before the Reds game. No promises, but we are working as quickly as we can. It's a collaboration between the city, the county, the teams, trying to make those spots available. So we're working on it, is kind of what I'm getting at. But thanks to all the crews that are down there, they've been working hard to try to make those accessible to the residents. Also, I did a couple of housing forums, talked a lot about the Cincinnati Development Fund and the work that they are doing with us, with the city, with private donors to make affordable housing more available here in Hamilton County. So I spoke at the Portman Center for Policy Solutions about housing. It was a really broad panel, and I was delighted to represent the county commissioner and talk about some of the work that we are doing in that space. We're doing quite a bit of work, as we all know, but was happy to tell the community about that in that forum. Also went to the Urban League's lion lunch yesterday. It was packed. It was great. Congratulations to all the lions that were recognized. I delivered a welcome from the county and thank you, Commissioner, for being there as well. I think it's important that the county gives those welcomes in those large forums, so I appreciated the opportunity to do that. And then also, just recently, as of a couple hours ago, delivered a proclamation at a company in Woodlawn. It's a flavoring company. It's called Man Flavoring, Man Inc. And they have expanded their footprint in Woodlawn and invested $100 million for that expansion. They do flavoring, they do fragrances. It's something that we're known for here in Hamilton County, and so this expansion is really important to continue to develop that sector here to provide for more opportunities, for more businesses, more jobs. And the mayor of Woodlawn, Brian Poole, was there, and he was really, really excited about this expansion. So happy to deliver a proclamation on behalf of all three commissioners at that event. Lastly, I wanted to talk about having gone up to Columbus. So the County Commissioners Association, along with other county elected officials, had a reception at the State House where we mix and mingle with legislators and talk about what's on their minds, what's on our minds. We're advocating for things relative to the county. The budget has just dropped and just been passed out of the House, and so there was a lot of conversation about indigent defense, about 911, about all the things that generally concern counties. But there was also quite a bit of conversation about the stadiums and about the Bengals and about what's going on in Cleveland. And so I did want to address that because I think there's been some question about where we stand by way of the budget process at the state level, what the request is from the county. And so I wanted to expand a little bit upon that and give just a little bit of background. And so the goal here, and we, of course, have talked about this for many months collectively as the three county commissioners with staff and with some of our consultants. The goal is and has been the creating a long-term lease with the Bengals to keep the team here, to provide for more events in the facility, which is the stadium, to make the stadium more accessible to the public, and to create ongoing economic activity on the banks, in part through what happens in that stadium. We have been working in collaboration with the Bengals to put together a request to the state related to the budget. And we remember, and I know we've talked about this, this conversation started months ago. And remember when Commissioner Reese was the president of the commission, there was a meeting that neither one of us attended because she was the president and only one of us can go. But she met with the governor, along with Jeff Aludo and others, to talk about what we could do or whether what the state could do to create part of this financial stack. We've always talked about the stack being the team, the NFL, the county, and the state, as has happened in other communities throughout the country. And so the request was of the governor, and the governor and his budget included an increase to the gaming fee that people pay when they gamble. And that would have generated enough dollars to help us with that financial stack. Evidently, the legislature on the House side was not keen on that idea, and they, so they didn't include it in their budget. But we did talk to them, and we talked to, now that I'm president, I went to the meeting with the Speaker of the House, Matt Huffman, and we talked to him in March about still providing, if we're not to be the gaming fee, then maybe there's another mechanism wherein we can have the state participate in this financial stack, recognizing that there's a tremendous economic benefit to the state of Ohio having the Bengals here. The banks kicks off $40 million a year to the state alone by way of economic development. And so it is in their interest to help us create this financial stack and try to do these improvements to the stadium and keep the team here on a long-term basis. And so we offered a proposal to the Speaker of the House at that time. It has more recently been codified. The Bengals and the county participated in putting a document together. I'm going to show it to you. It's the Paycor Stadium Comprehensive Renovation Plan. That's a mouthful. There it is. And so that was provided not only to the Speaker of the House, but also to the Southwest Ohio delegation. We must have our delegation in lockstep with us as we move through this process. And so at our meeting, we talked about this, and this has also now been provided to the delegation, both on the D side and the R side. And so the request of the state per this document is $350 million from their budget. And, you know, the funding source is something that we continue to talk to them about. I do want to say that while it didn't show up in the House's version of the budget, that is not an indication that we have not been talking to the legislators. This is a process. As many of you know, the budget moves from the governor's office to the House, then over to the Senate, starts from scratch over in the Senate, and then they eventually will agree to something. And so we've got time on the Senate side in particular to talk to leadership over there in addition to continuing the conversations with leadership in the House to see if we can't get a funding source identified and somewhere close to the $350 million that we have asked for. The idea here, again, being a part of this stack, we're all participating in the financial stack to make these major improvements to the stadium, which is owned by the taxpayers of Hamilton County. They're also taxpayers in the state of Ohio. And so I think it's entirely appropriate. We have, through this document, you will also see that, remember the presentation that we got from the architects, at that time, it was 1.2 billion was the cost of the renovations that we were discussing. We have pared that down to 830 million per this document. There's some flexibility in that number, but that's where we are at the moment. And I want to say, by way of context, that the amount that the taxpayers have been paying per the lease that was signed many years ago, neither of us were here, at that time, the taxpayers were on the hook for about 95% of the renovations and the build of those two stadiums. We are looking to do something that is more fair than that, is more equitable than that, and has the team participating in the NFL and the state of Ohio. So that's where we sit at this moment in time. I did want to kind of clear the air because I've gotten a lot of I did want to kind of clear the air because I've gotten a lot of questions. I think there's a lot of media interest in this. People are saying all kinds of things about why we weren't included in the House version of the state budget. But I do want to remind people, and I was at the legislature for eight years, so I do have some experience with this, the budget is a process. And we talked to the governor, we've talked to the Speaker of the House and folks on the House side, and we are now moving those conversations over to the Senate side. So the conversation is not over, and we are continuing to request participation from the state in the financial stack for the stadium. So Commissioner, I don't know if you have any comments related to that. I just wanted to get that out in the open.
Just one comment. My concern is the fact that the state budget, it seems to be focusing more on the Cleveland Browns, our lease ends before theirs ends. And so I'm just wondering why there is so much focus on the Cleveland Browns. It's not due to our lack of work. We've presented a lot of information, discussed a lot of things, presented the packet, as you say, but for whatever reason, we have not been as folk, they have not focused on us as they have on Cleveland. And so we'll continue to move forward for our residents and continue to present information to the state.
Thank you. And I have heard a little bit of conversation about that, but Cleveland was included and Hamilton County was not. But there is a great deal of conversation related to the fairness of if Cleveland were to get money in the state budget, Hamilton County should also get money in the state budget. And so, as I said, it's a process. Those conversations are ongoing. But the Haslam family did have some success on the House side, and so we will continue to pursue this. But again, just wanted to put that out there. There are, you know, interviews and tweets and all kinds of stuff going out there right now, so wanted to clear the air. All right. Jeff, we are going to move to you for your comments, and we've got quite a few byleaves today.
Can I just ask a question of your report, President Drehouse? The expansion of the company that you went to in Woodlawn, did they talk about employment, how many jobs they were going to have?
They did, and they are expanding the jobs. I don't have that number up my fingertips, but the expansion, I think they said, is five or four or five times what they were doing in Woodlawn already. They're consolidating, and so it will have more jobs associated with it. It's a French company.
So are they hiring like right now? They've already hired?
The facility is complete, so I would expect that they are hiring right now.
Give the name again.
It's Man. It's spelled M-A-N-E, pronounced Man Inc.
In Woodlawn.
In Woodlawn. You should reach out to the mayor in Woodlawn, Brian Poole. He was pretty excited today. Yeah, thank you. Administrator?
Thank you, Commissioners. Just briefly picking up on the comments on the state commissioners, and just to kind of dovetail into that question, I think, as you may partly mentioned, Commissioner Drehouse, a lot of the conversation at the state, we were talking about why Cleveland and why Hamilton County is not yet in that bill or in the process. I think there's been a lot of focus around the stadium in Cleveland as being a new stadium in a new development, and tax revenues coming off of that development, and the state trying to find a way to bond against those additional tax revenues. And I think what we've noticed is what is being proposed up there in terms of a new development around a new stadium just happens to be very similar to what we have already done here in Hamilton County and Cincinnati on the banks and the creation of two stadiums to generate a platform and anchors for a large economic development project on our riverfront. So part of our discussion at the state level has been to ensure that, look, as you're looking, what they're proposing up in Cleveland may be a great thing, but what we're proposing down here is a renovation. We don't have to build new. We've taken care of our stadiums. They're very well-maintained, so we don't have to build new. We've already done this development. It's been spinning off tax revenue for the community and the state for years, and therefore any solution the state comes up with needs to be able to consider both a new build and a renovation-type approach. So we're going to continue those conversations, as you mentioned, in the Senate. I just think from an equity perspective, that makes sense, and we'll continue to help our delegation and the broader General Assembly with some ideas to help make that work.
I'm just going to put a finer point on that, and I didn't say this in my comments, but I have it in front of me. So the banks delivers $2.3 billion annual economic impact, which includes $1 billion in private investment. So that's what you're referring to, and I just, I've got the numbers in front of me, but it's a significant benefit to this community and to the state.
So with that said, Commissioners, just moving on to some byleave comments and some byleave items. For comments, I really just wanted to note, we had an update from EMA on the flooding this past Tuesday. I just really wanted to thank EMA for all of their work in helping us through these events, as they always do, but also thank all of the other public entities that are out there working on the direct day-to-day response, the Metropolitan Sewer District, county facilities, our stadia and parking staff, the county engineer, sheriff, planning and zoning staff, and all of the public employees in all of our jurisdictions that are out there every day. And when these happen, they're the ones being called out in the middle of the night to make sure that infrastructure is safe and that the communities are safe. We got a really nice email from the police chief in Newtown commenting on the work of MSD in ameliorating flooding in that community and comparing the impacts from the 2018 flooding to this year's flooding, and how the work that MSD did was absolutely crucial in making sure that this year's impacts were much less to the community. So I just wanted to put a note out there to thank everyone, especially the public employees out there doing all that work. I will say that our, as it relates to stadia and infrastructure, that we actually had our insurance consultants and loss management consultants down at Paycor State, not at Paycor, actually at GABP yesterday, just looking over our buildings, and they were absolutely impressed at the level of maintenance of the stadium and, in particular, at how, at the protections that were put in place to protect the public infrastructure from flooding. So we had them down, we had our insurance folks down there, possibly the worst time you could have them down there, but they left very, very impressed. So just wanted to pass along that thanks to our risk management staff as well. So that, Commissioners, are my comments. I do have several byleave items to walk through today. First is byleave item number one in your packet. This is budget adjustment number 15. This adds $1.575 million to fully fill out and fund the Hilltop Parking Project. We've got a revised estimate now and a fuller estimate for demolition, site prep, and paving. The Budget Office is recommending $1.575 million. County administration recommends approval. And I'm happy to walk through all of these, or if you want to take them item by item.
Commissioner, do you have a preference?
I've already talked to our administrator about the byleaves, so yeah.
Yeah, let's walk through all of them.
Okay. Second item is approving the final 911 plan pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 128. Andy Knapp was here a couple weeks ago, I think, to provide the board with an update on this. This is in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code to ensure that we're operating in compliance with state regulations and best industry practices. Andy and his staff did a fantastic job making this a cooperative effort between the county, local law enforcement, fire, EMS, and our local stakeholders. So recommend approval there. Item number three is simply a resolution changing the time and location of a meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. This moves our Tuesday, April 17 meeting to 6:00 PM at Norwood City Hall. So I just want to be specific about that. And finally, we have a resolution authorizing the award. This ties back to item one, a resolution authorizing the award of a construction contract for the bank's Hilltop Lot Bid Package Number One, which is demolition at $633,000. This is to a work wrecking. So with that, Commissioners, I recommend approval of the byleave agenda.
Thank you, Jeff. Any comments or questions?
For item three, I think, Jeff, you said Tuesday, but it's a Thursday.
Sorry, Mr. Dressing was just telling me that is Thursday, and I would recommend that we, it's listed on the resolution as a Tuesday, so we want to note that for amendment from the floor.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the clarity. Yeah, this is the meeting where we'll have the recommendations from the Commission on Women and Girls come forward. It is not at the Board of Elections. It is at the municipal building in Norwood, just for clarity's sake, because we've done this at the BOE before. So just to be clear, it's at the municipal building in Norwood. All right, I'm going to make a motion that we approve of byleaves one through four.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. That completes my agenda.
All right. Engineer, if you don't mind, I see you getting up. My apologies. I'm gonna, if you don't, with your deference, Commissioner Dumas, I'd like to get MSD up here because I hope that they will give us an update related to the flooding. We've had a lot of conversations about the flooding already. There's item number four, is there item anyway? So if you all would come forward. I saw the same communication probably from Newtown about how MSD had done some proactive work to make sure that the flooding that happened in 2018 didn't repeat this year and the success that so many residents has had because of the proactive work of MSD. So I also want to give you kudos for that. I know there were plenty of calls that came in. Many of them were not related to MSD. Some of them were. So if you could just give us an update related to all things MSD and the flooding, and maybe walk through that process real quickly so, once again, people can hear it from you and better understand it.
Sure. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So I'll start with that subject, and then we'll go to the item next, which we're on talking about.
Perfect.
So yes, you know, beginning last week, of course, we all were hearing the weather reports and began preparing for that. And really, the significant rain event began in the early morning hours of Friday, late Thursday night, Friday morning. So that was April 4. And we have been reporting and working very closely with EMA and the CDEOC all through this event. And so we've looked at it as one continuous, essentially, rain event, beginning again on April 4, the rain event really, and the bulk of our customer calls coming in through April 9. So we did receive, the final number is a little higher than your last update, that we received 259 calls. So these are, you know, customers calling our sewer backup hotline or reporting online. We do monitor that and respond 24/7 to those calls. We, of course, staffed up in preparation for this and had really an all-hands-on-deck approach with the number of dispatchers available and crews on call. So beginning on Friday, the 4th, we had, at one point, we had 11 crews, and then we were able to drop that down to nine, and at this point, we're back to standard operations. But with that level of call volume, 259 calls over that period of time, it really was not a significant event for the MSD system in terms of the intensity of the rainfall we had, because it really came over a period of time, and we all know it caused a lot of other problems. But we weren't getting those really heavy, intense, flashy downpours in one location that tend to really overwhelm our system. So of those calls that we responded to and investigated, we have referred 23 at this point in time for cleaning services and then, you know, other SBU services that they will be eligible for. That number really does correlate about with what we see typically over, you know, over time with this program is that we're seeing about 10%, sometimes a little more, sometimes a little less, of the call volume that are, in fact, eligible for the SBU program. As a reminder to everyone, this sewer backup program, which is through our consent decree, is really to address capacity-related backups into a building's basement typically, so water in your basement or in the building itself that is caused by the main sewer. So in rain events like this, this is when we have a lot of capacity-related issues, and that's what we're looking for. We also, properties are also eligible if there's a blockage in the public sewer that's related to negligent operation or maintenance of the sewer. But, you know, in an event like this, what we're looking for are those capacity issues in the main sewer. And the reason a lot of the calls we receive are not eligible is because they're, they tend to be, they appear to be issues on private property. We know that the public sewer is still open and running. We're not overflowing at the manholes, and there's no evidence that the main sewer backed up under the property, that it's, the water's getting in the basement from some other means. So that's, again, really did correlate kind of with our standard, you know, what we're seeing in terms of the number of eligible properties. So again, that was over the, I guess it's about a five-day period of the rain event, with the highest number of calls coming in at the beginning and tapering off by about Tuesday of this week. And that was 259 and only 23 that we found eligible. So I do want to address, you know, as this turned into a river flooding event, which is really different than that wet weather rainfall we were getting, it still has significant impact to our operations. And in fact, you know, there's just a lot of operational things that we do in coordination with a lot of the other agencies around the city and the county. But from the perspective of some of the calls we're receiving that the individuals spoke about earlier, we do have instances where properties in some of the communities along the river have called in with a sewer backup, and those properties, I don't know any of the particular ones he was referencing, but we saw some of these in Riverside, Cleves, Riverside and Columbia Tuscalum, and then in Newtown, although we, as you mentioned, really prevented a lot of those. Those are, when we do go and investigate them and look at them, while it may be that the water is from the public sewer, it really is, we are not, those are not eligible for the sewer backup program, and this was through just one of the standard SBU court findings that with the historic river flooding, essentially, our sewers are full of the river flood themselves. So it's the river is inundating our entire sewer, our sewer system down there. So those properties that are in those floodplain, in those floodfront areas, what they're experiencing is more of the flood damage than it, and they are not eligible for the sewer backup program. And that should be being communicated to customers, so I will follow up, make sure anyone that has called and doesn't understand that, that that is communicated. And the other thing that we have communicated to them about is that there are other resources. I can't speak to the eligibility, but there are resources with respect to the damages on property in a historic flood event, and if they're in the county, you know, they should be hearing and working with the county EMA, and if they're in the city, there's resources in the city. And we've been coordinating, so anything we know about those properties are being hopefully contacted by the appropriate agency to complete those damage assessments from the flooding. So I do, you know, we will follow up to make sure people are getting the resources they need for the help they need if they're truly impacted by the historic river flooding and not a sewer backup. Let's see, I think that was, I can comment quickly on the Newtown operational steps that we took this year, and that was, as you said, it was really our crews that work out in there, you know, that are talking to the communities and the residents. This was something where we had looked at what happened in 2018, and they had, you know, really been concerned about the impacts of flooding in that community to see if there was anything they could do. And this is really unique to what happens during the flood, not the rainfall events. And it was just a matter of being able to bypass an area of our sewer to alleviate the flooding that could come from our sewer backing up, from really where the river really is reaching the elevations of those properties. So it was innovative, but also simple in many ways, and this is just something during the, you know, prior to the flooding, they went back out and talked to folks and said, okay, we can do this now, and it's going to be somewhat disruptive. We're going to have bypass pumping, you know, across your driveways in some instances. But in doing that, we were really able to alleviate the impacts of the flood because we could isolate properties that had previously been impacted. So something certainly to learn from and do in other areas, but like I said, you know, sometimes simple solutions really do work, and we were able to prevent additional damages and impact there.
So, any questions? Yeah, and before you get to the item on the calendar, anything, any trouble at the Mill Creek facility?
At the facility itself? No. So operationally, you know, in terms of our treatment facilities during these, when the river is flooding, and of course, we have the barrier dam just south of our, you know, just downstream of our outfalls. So that is a big help into the infrastructure itself. But our treatment plans, we do take steps to protect the infrastructure, you know, to really do our best to keep the river from coming in to the facilities and flooding out any of our infrastructure. And so there are gates that we can close or... And so there are gates that we can close or partially close. And, and what that means is we may be not fully treating some of the flow. But in the long term, you know, those impacts with the river at this stage it's in are really very low. And all of that is, you know, pursuant to our operational permits and protocols. So those are the, you know, the operational decisions and, and processes that we follow when the river reaches various stages to protect the infrastructure.
The gate went down, the river?
Yes. So correct. We didn't have any, we don't have any concerns at the Mill Creek.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Just a couple of comments. Thank you for your comments. I had mentioned, I think on Tuesday, about Wenton Woods and how the ticket booth was almost covered up. I don't know how they handled that. I'm sure the, as you said, the water's receded now. But I will say just in general, Christie, just to let you know, my general concern is, like I went to Avondale, they had built up 11 houses. And all, everybody's building up. And so all these units are going up a hill. And you still have those older homes at the bottom that have been there for 100 years. And so my concern is really the new builds that are going up all over the county and the overland flooding that can impact personal sewer backups and that we take a look at. I know we had an issue when I first started, that long townhome meeting we had. I think it was in Price Hill. But they were, the residents were saying that it was new builds that were, was flowing down in their homes. So there are a lot of new builds coming up, builds, B-U-I-L-D-S for people are listening. And that, that overland flooding is going to impact the older homes that are still in the areas and that how do we determine who's liable? And so I'm going to be really taking a look at that as it occurs. Hopefully it won't, won't occur in, in sewer backups in those small, older homes. But I don't want them to be responsible for, you know, tho- those big developments that are coming up. So I just wanted to let you know that I'll be just kind of taking a look at it as we go. So nothing related to this rain, but that's all I have.
All right, great. All right, let's move on to item number four while you're up there. Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Item four is related to MSD's CSO 488, 490, I-75 reconstruction coordination project. And the legislation before you today is to approve an amendment to an existing agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation under which ODOT will construct certain MSD improvements as part of its projects on I-75. This agreement, the original agreement was actually approved by the board back in 2022. ODOT advertised the construction contract and received only one quite high bid at that time. So they essentially, it's my understanding, went back to the drawing board and looked at their project delivery strategy and made some changes. So this amendment really captures those changes that were made and updates the information. So the changes include ODOT project numbers, contact information, as well as under ODOT's new plans, we'll no longer have a shared head wall with shared future operating and maintenance responsibilities. We'll each, each entity will have their own separate head walls and, and will operate and maintain their own going forward. So it's actually really simplifying the agreement. No change in contract amount. This is a $0 request and we recommend approval.
Okay. Yeah. So this is the partnership with ODOT related to the Brent Spence, right? Oh, it's not.
This is actually a different project.
Why, right?
Yeah, right. We, we take advantage of this opportunity anytime we can. Anytime they're doing work and our-
Yeah. Where's this one located?
It's, it's spread out along I-75 and looking at the exact, let me see, between the Mill Creek and State Route 562 or the Norwood Lateral. Communities in the area are Springfield Township, Elmwood Place, City of Cincinnati's Carthage and Roseland neighborhoods.
All right, great. And, and to, to be clear, this will be a benefit to the ratepayers because we're getting a, an enhanced system here, a new enhanced system.
Correct.
At no cost to the ratepayers.
Correct.
So I'm gonna, yeah, with, I don't know if you have any questions or comments?
I will, I will add one clarification there. So their projects, as part of their project, they are separating some stormwater out. So that's great. That's no cost to us. They are affecting some of our infrastructure and relocating it. So we, through that, get some new infrastructure. So that is a benefit at no cost. They did ask if we wanted anything else done as, as part of their project. So they are installing stormwater crossings under the highway, which, as you could imagine, would be very difficult and expensive for us to do on our own, if not in coordination with their work. So we are paying an amount. It is up to $973,000, I believe. Yes.
Okay, but that is-
But that was appropriated back in 2022. So.
All right, great. I'm gonna make a motion to approve of item number four.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate the update. Thank you. All right. The engineer's been waiting with bated breath. Eric Beck is here. Three items today. Mr. Engineer?
Thank you. I will just say that, that the MSD project is in the ODOT Through the Valley project. That's, that's which project's that, that's in. Three items. Item number one is a resolution for a joint agreement with the City of Wyoming for control of snow and ice on various city and county roads. This is an agreement for us to do some snow, snow and ice removal on Wyoming streets. And Wyoming will do some, some snow and ice on our streets. There's no cost involved. This is an operational efficiency item. Item number two is a resolution for the, allowing us to go out to bid for the 2025 sidewalk repair and replacement program. We've already had our two here at public hearings on this. This will allow us to go out to bid for the project located in Anderson, Colrain, Columbia, Springfield and Sycamore Townships with a bid opening date of May 8th. The engineer's estimate is $111,170 and the funds come out of the Road and Bridge Fund. Item number three is a joint agreement with Sycamore Township for the construction of improvements along Euclid Avenue between Hosbrook and Kenwood Road. This is actually in, in conjunction with a project in Madeira. The county line goes down the center of the road and they will be doing improvements on their side. And Sycamore Township and the county engineer want to make sure that the full road is done. So this will allow us to pave the whole road. And Sycamore Township will be paying for half of that on our road, which we appreciate. So this is a 100, uh, 200, $200,000 project with $100,000 county share coming out of permissive auto funds and a, a project will be completed in November of this year.
Okay, thank you. I have a quick question related to item number one.
Yes.
How many communities do we have an agreement like this with?
Very few. We had a lot of unwritten ones and we did away with all of those. And now we're starting to reach out to the communities again, find out where their operationally they work. And we're getting them codified so that we can continue them in the future.
Okay. I, I ask because so many people have been complimentary of the snow, snow removal and-
Yes.
On your side. I'm surprised more of them don't take advantage of this, but-
Yeah. This, this is kind of a swap where it's more convenient for us to do this road and that one's adjacent to theirs. So, yeah.
Okay. So you're not, you're taking on added responsibility?
No. It was just a swap. They're doing part and we're doing part.
So what if a community did want you to take on? Say Wyoming came to you and said, we would like you to do all of it?
I don't know that I have the authority to expend money there. We could do it by contract. We'd have to work with the prosecutor's office to see if we're allowed to do that. Yeah, this, this one, there's no cost, so.
Understood, understood. But it reminds me of the sheriff patrols where we do have contracts with the, different jurisdictions for that service. So I'm just, I'm just kicking that out there. I mean, I, I feel like we heard a lot of complaints about snow removal, but they were not on county roads.
That is correct.
That's true.
I'm very proud of my employees for making sure that happens. Yes.
All right. So, so to be clear, there are no communities for, through which you have a contract to clear their roads?
That is correct. That is correct.
All right. I think that's something to think about. Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yeah. And Wyoming, I had a question about one. Wyoming is pretty good at clearing their streets.
They are. This is a little stretch on Galbraith Road, right between the city corp and the county corp. It's only about 900 feet long.
That's what I was thinking.
So we'll pick it up at the city corp and then they'll be doing the portion up on Fleming that's between two corp lines.
Okay, very good. And we also, sometimes Hamilton County allows other entities to store their salt in your salt bins or not?
Yes. We, we actually do allow, we're getting prepared right now to go out for bid for salt for next winter. And we reach out to all the municipalities and all the townships and let them join in our bid if they wish to. And we also do store some salts. We do shared domes with some of the townships. Yes.
That's great.
That's all I had. I just feel like there's an opportunity here to increase our revenues. I know-
I, I would agree, but it also would require more equipment and more-
Understood, understood. There's an investment that would need to be made here, but you're already out there on these streets. So I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I just, it occurs to me as you were talking through that relationship with Wyoming that I understand that this is not that, but it, it would be interesting to know if the communities would be interested in, in that if we could accommodate that. I'm just saying. All right, never mind. I'm gonna move that we approve of items one, two and three.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Engineer. All right. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioners. Walk through this fairly succinctly here. Item number five is budget adjustment number 14 for the general fund. This is reducing $2 million in economic development and adding 15,000 in engineer projects for a net total of a reduction of 1.985 million. Item number six is a resolution accepting and authorizing a then and now agreement with WebFeet Complete at JFS for $3,144. Item number seven is the purchase of a 2025 F-250 as a replacement in county facilities, $47,556. Item number eight is the purchase of one 2025 Ford E-350 cargo van as a replacement in county facilities, $54,376. Item number nine is a, is a resolution accepting purchase orders of Hamilton County and authorizing their execution and release. This is for a contract between UC and the sheriff, as well as some reentry training over in River City for $238,600. Item number 10 is the purchase of a 2025 Chrysler Pacifica for $33,670 in the sheriff's office. Item number 11 is a 2020, purchase of a 2025 Chevrolet Equinox as a replacement in the sheriff's office, $26,540. Item number 12 is the purchase of a 2025 Ford F-150 as a replacement in the sheriff's office, $50,139. Item number 13 is the rejection of an invitation to bid specifically 008-25. This is for a guard booth at the, at the banks, Phase 3C, $216,500 was the, was the estimated value of that, of that project, but we're actually rejecting that bid. Then we have some job and family services items. We have a resolution authorizing renewal of a single source agreement between Bunker Hill Haven for Boys and the County for Independent Living Services, $192,000. Item number 15 is a resolution authorizing a renewal and amendment of the Single Source Agreement with Changing the World LLC for Independent Living Services, $100,000. Item 16 is a resolution authorizing renewal of an agreement with Beach Acres, doing business as Beach Acres Parenting Center and the County for Parenting Time Visitation Services at $600,000. Item number 17 is a resolution authorizing JFS to enter into negotiations with residential treatment providers for residential treatment services. The, the, the amount listed here is $20 million, but that is the amount that covers a wide range of service providers under that particular resolution and allow, just allows for negotiation with all of those providers. Item 18 is the report of no objection to four liquor permits through the sheriff's office. Item number 19 is a resolution authorizing travel at the county expense of four employees of the coroner's office to Columbus, Ohio. And that completes your consent agenda, Commissioners. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Jeff, I have a question about item number 17. The item for $20 million. Could you help us better understand what this process is?
Certainly. Commissioner, I will just defer to John Nelson, who is here, who can walk you through the process and the approach for that.
Hi, John.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Drehouse and Commissioner Summer Adumas. Just wanted to give you a little bit of background of this. So this is basically the RFP process. What we're asking today is just permission to negotiate with 18 of the 19 vendors that have responded to the RFP here. So once the process is negotiated, we'll come back to you, to the board with the final contract. And that, that will be a specific dollar amount for each vendor. So this 20 million is based on previous year's expenditure for what we use for residential treatment. So the goal is just informing today is to inform and get permission from the board in order to engage in negotiations with these residential treatment facilities.
So how does this differ then from, or is this part of the normal process? It seems different from what we've done in the past.
So this is a, a pretty normal, Commissioner Drehouse. So we do this every so periodically because what we'll do is we'll go into negotiations and this, each contract will be for one year, but we'll also have through renewals. So typically, once we go through this process, we have those contracts in effect for renewal if we, if we so choose to. And we come to the board for renewals as well. And that happens on an annual basis. But truly, this process is just authorizing us to negotiate contracts for the next four years.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification for me also. Items 14, JFS items 14 through 17, I was adding them up even though they're not all allocated, as you were saying. And it's 20,892,000 is what I have. And I'm hoping that, Jeff, maybe when you read through JFS for me, I don't know if the president or Commissioner Reese wants it, but it would be great at the end of these four, you would say for a total of 20,892,000. And the reason why I'm saying that we can start early, letting people know, as we looked at our reserve is 2.5, this is 20 million, almost 21 million dollars that we're spending. And so people can see and maybe not completely understand as the questions were asked. But we're spending money very frequently and trying to allocate it as we can. But we are spending this money on the children and the services that they need. And so I, I could always add it up myself, but I was thinking if people are listening, we had four items and it was 21 million dollars that. And I think we need to say that at the end of it, or you, you guys can give it to him or whatever, so the public can hear it. So that's all I had, John. Item number six, a little small issue.
Can I piggyback on that, Commissioner?
Sure.
Because I, I think the point is well taken that we have been talking about the increased expenses for caring for kids in this community. And if we don't say the total dollar amount, it does get lost. And so I, I agree with you that it's important to add all these up as we continue to see these escalating costs. Because we're, we're gonna be up against it here soon because of those escalating costs. So I, I just want to say I support that comment. And so if we can get some kind of totality and on the calendar listed there somehow, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item number six, Jeff, I was just wondering why Job and Family Services was under Commission Administration? The WebFeet Complete thing?
Commissioner, I think just because the then and now items typically fall as a, as an administration-type activity. So that's, that's the only reason. I think a lot of times when we have then and now is they, they fall underneath Commission Administration.
And then and now is?
Then and now is when a, a, I'm sorry?
No, go on.
Okay. So when a, when a purchase has been made, but there is not yet a purchase order for that. So it is a, it, it's an accounting entry to say that the funding was actually available. It was available then. It's available now.
Okay.
So it is, but typically you want to have that purchase order in place before you actually purchase a product or a service. Sometimes for a lot of different reasons. Sometimes there could be an emergency service where someone has to go out and buy something. Sometimes it just doesn't work out. And so we have to go back and get the purchase order after the purchase was made. And then we do what's called a then and now resolution.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to make a motion that we approve of items five through 19.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Thank you. We have nothing further in front of us, Commissioner. If it's okay with you, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Damas?
Yes.